Okay.
Outside.
We are going to call to order this meeting. Today is Wednesday, August 21st, 6:30 PM. This is a special commission meeting of the City of West Miami. Madam Clerk? I'm sorry. Pledge of Allegiance. Actually, Senator Rodriguez is here. Would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes, roll call. Mayor Roger Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Candy de Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner El Diaz Padroni on his way. City manager Yolanda Aguilar and City Clerk Henry Gonzalez are present. City Attorney Jose Villalobos is excused.
Okay. Madam Clerk, is there anyone here for citizens' presentation?
No, Madam Mayor, nobody.
No, okay. I would like to take something out of order. It's actually not on the agenda, but we have a very special guest with us today. Senator Jose Javier Rodriguez is here for a very special occasion. However, Commissioner Diaz Padroni has not arrived yet, so I would very much like to wait. Do we know how much longer he'll be? Because I'd like him to be here for this.
He should be here momentarily.
Momentarily?
So if you could wait on the presentation, maybe we could get started and we'll...
Well, I don't want to get started because everything else is going to take... I mean, Item A is going to take a while.
Yes.
And I wanted Senator Jose Javier Rodriguez to come up before we got into the meat and potatoes of it. So can we text Commissioner Diaz Padroni?
I sure can.
Just how close he is?
Yes.
Because I don't want to get started on Item A and then have to stop Frankie midway. So if we can find out where he's at, and then we'll bring the senator up, and then continue with the agenda.
Give me one minute, please.
So in the meantime, does anyone want to sing or dance or any type of entertainment? Anyone know a good joke? You know? Well, okay, well. Commissioner, do you have anything to add to this? I mean, Vice Mayor, anything you'd like to say for the sake of...
Me? I'm sorry, I was reading...
We're making... I have to use a little bit of time here waiting for Commissioner.
No, no. We are very happy without the Senator Rodriguez here.
Okay. Yes, we are.
Then they're offering the empanaitos.
Yes, yes.
Coca-Cola. So feel at home.
I tested him. I'm waiting for a response, Madam Mayor.
Because the curtains, you know, the director of Polyworks, who was supposed to install the curtains for today, has been with problems with installation. So maybe next time you come, the curtains will be... So preventing the sun, you know. Good idea. Good idea.
Okay, so what I'm going to do at this point is just take a two-minute break until we hear back from the Commissioner. I'm sorry for the delay, Senator. It shouldn't take long.
He's doing it already. He likes it here.
What did you say?
Yeah, you like it here. You're doing it already.
Of course.
Testing. You're on, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, let's call the meeting back to order, please. Madam Clerk, Commissioner Diaz Padroni is now present.
Duly noted.
All right. So with that said, it is my distinct pleasure to call to the podium our Senator Jose Javier Rodriguez, very special guest we have here this evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Jose Javier Rodriguez, honor of serving the same constituents, but in the state senate, and, you know, ceremonially bringing a ceremonial check for what we were able to accomplish together this legislative session, which is $985,000 for the Potable Water Project Phase One, which we'll be discussing. I'm going to sit in it for as long as I can on the project. And on the legislative side, obviously, you all worked very hard from the first time that any of us met in educating us on the need and staying on top of making sure that we could eventually make this happen, and I'm happy that we did. I'm happy that the governor did not veto it. One of the governor's priorities are water issues, and so I think helping educate the governor's staff about this was critical, too. But the most important thing for me to say up here is to recognize by name many of my colleagues in the state house, obviously Javier Fernandez. He wasn't able to make it right now. I think he's coming later on. Also Holly Rasheen, who is part of the Miami-Dade and Monroe delegations, our most important subcommittee chair in the House. So if you see her here in Miami-Dade, definitely give her some thanks, as well as, of course, Brian Avila, who helped out as well. And in the senate, my senate colleague Debbie Mayfield from the Melbourne area, our chair who was... saw it fitting to join forces with us to try to help make sure that we could make it through to the end. So anyway, just want to say, obviously, this is ceremonial, and I just thank you for your advocacy on behalf of, you know, the residents of West Miami to try to turn around the situation, you know, that you've been handed in terms of the water. So I don't know how you want to do it. Maybe just a photo. You may want to check the routing number on this. I don't think you could probably walk into the bank with this. But just to, you know, just to say, thank you for being able to work with you all, and I'm optimistic as you are about what we hope to accomplish.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator.
Any other words from the table for the Senator?
Thank you.
We appreciate very much your effort, too. Thank you for receiving us in Tallahassee with a warm reception, and thank you for work hard.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, Senator, you definitely played a very, very part in the team, and you're right. It was a team effort, so we appreciate your being here this evening. It's ceremonial, but still, it's very nice.
The check is good.
Exactly. You know, the picture with the check, it's really good. So we all thank you very much for everything you did for us. And Madam Manager, if we could get some letters drafted to the very important people that the Senator mentioned?
Absolutely.
So we can thank them.
Absolutely.
And of course, personally, when we see them, we will, but that way we can get something in writing to them to show our thanks.
Got it. I got all the names down.
If we can come forward for a picture with Senator?
Yeah. And you're getting some extra... An added bonus here this evening.
Yes. Usually we don't have meetings at such an early hour.
Not as anal as you, but I can see you speckle dust.
I can... I know.
And you need to have someone tell me the dust.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. With a vacuum cleaner.
Yes.
Look away. Don't... Focus on something else, please.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to continue with the meeting at this point so that... I know the Senator has a busy evening. Madam Clerk, if you'll continue with the agenda, please.
Yes. Item four, under new business special agenda items. Item four A, report and recommendation on the implementation of Phase One of the potable water system with the use of funds as approved by the State of Florida Office of the Governor in the amount of $985,210. TYL International, Mariana Valle, PE, Francisco Alonso, PE, Office of the City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'd like to yield to Francisco Alonso, our city engineer representing TYL International. And after we received your marching orders and the confirmation of the allocation from the State of Florida to the City of West Miami, we proceeded to instruct our city engineer to put a plan together that would basically set the wheels in motion on how we should proceed with the situation at hand. And as we all know, we have a serious water leaks and basically a replacement of the water lines, which is imminent at this point. So without further delay, I'd like to yield to our city engineer to tell us how they propose we should tackle the problem in phases.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Mr. Alonso, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, you should have before you in your packet a memorandum. So basically, what we've done here is prepared a memorandum going over some of the pieces that you already know, a little bit of the history of the project, how we kind of got to this point, and what I'm going to go over is how we've ended up at the decision to target... to phase the project and to target this first phase in particular. So the first item on the memo really just, again, pertains to kind of history. You know, we all know the problems that we're having with the leaks, the 50-year-old cast iron pipes, so I'm not going to get into too much detail on that. As some of you may know, in 2015, the city was awarded a grant through FDP to perform a citywide potable water master plan, which we completed and which we were hired to do, and we completed in 2016. So as part of that plan, we basically developed a master plan for the entire city for replacement of the system in its entirety, aside from a few areas that have been improved over the recent years, but for all intents, really, the entire system. As part of that plan, we also prioritized certain areas. So we looked at some of the leak studies to identify areas where we had the most leakage, the areas with the oldest pipes, the areas with the most undersized pipes. So we kind of used several criteria to try to prioritize what parts of the city we would target first, reason being because it's a large sum of money to do it all at one time, and we looked at prioritizing the phases. So as a result of that study, this is actually the exhibit that's up here. Let me point it towards you guys.
Good.
So that's actually the northern half of the city that you see there. As a result of that study, we broke the city out into three phases, again, in order of priority. Phase one being the northeast quadrant of the city, phase two being the northwest, and then phase three being the south side of the city. And the reason we came to that, again, that phase one area was the oldest portion of the city, had the most undersized mains, and the most occurrence of leaks. That study resulted in a budget, and we were looking at, at the time when we prepared the study, a total project budget for the entire city of about $16 million. Since then, we've... As TYL, we've done some other projects, and we've seen kind of what the cost is out there for these type of projects. So, you know, we're... I would... If we were to revise it and do this master plan again today, we'd probably lower that cost actually a little bit. It was actually a bit conservative. So we're looking at a total system cost of, in the order magnitude of about $12 million in reality of where we are today. So that kind of laid the groundwork for everything that we've done since then, and I'll kind of go over a little bit what other things have been happening. The third paragraph there, over the last seven years, the city has been doing every year biannually leak detection studies throughout the entire city. So as part of those studies, we've consistently been in the range of about 50 million gallons a year of identified leakage. Now, those studies, as I stated in these meetings before, those studies are not perfect because they're kind of subjective in the manner that they do the testing and determine how much flow is actually leaking out of the system. They basically measure the pipes for sound, and they assign a certain flow based on the sound that they hear. So it's kind of subjective and up to kind of professional experience. So it's not an exact number. On the other side, we have kind of bulk numbers that we've analyzed over the years. As a result, we're looking at bulk numbers, and what I mean by bulk numbers is how much water we're buying from the Miami-Dade Water Sewer Department and how much water we're selling. When you look at the delta between what we're buying and what we're selling and a few other things like water for maintenance and things like that, the loss is on the order of magnitude of 150 million gallons. So any... The leaks that the city is experiencing is anywhere in the range of 50 million gallons per year to 150 million gallons per year. Both of those numbers are frightening. They're big numbers. If it's on the high end, you're talking about that the city is pumping into the ground, and the, you know, $200,000 every year is just going into the ground. So it's a pretty scary number. We're not alone in the county. We have to report to Miami-Dade DERM for a lot of the environmental issues that we are a utility, so we run a sanitary sewer system. We have a drainage system. We have a water system. So we are responsible for a lot of compliance with federal guidelines that are administered through DERM. Of course, the water system is a part of those guidelines. In recent years, they've gotten much more strict and have really kind of hammered down on compliance issues. So for example, this past year, we had to prepare a corrective action plan for the water system. We basically have to do a water accounting of the water that we're purchasing and the water that we're selling, and we have to tell them, hey, we're losing this amount of gallonage every year. We did that earlier this year. We prepared a corrective action plan, which this work that we're proposing here is a part of. We gave them some short-term goals. We gave them some long-term goals. The long-term goal, obviously, being to replace the system. But they have a target that's federally mandated to meet a 10% maximum water loss in our system. Right now, we're at 45%. That is a huge delta, and I'm certain it will not go unnoticed. We have not heard back yet from DERM as to what actions will be taken as part of that corrective action plan that we proposed, but that's going to turn some heads over there. That's a big number, and we, like I said, we have not heard back yet, and as soon as we do hear back, we will report to the commission. But I expect some action on their part regarding the amount of water that we're losing. So here we are, 2019. We have this appropriation, and what are we going to do with this money? So I'll walk you through real quick on how we kind of came to target this area up in Phase One. So as I mentioned earlier, we have been doing these leak detection studies for the past seven years. What we did was, and I'll... Let me turn this guy around. So what we did was plot on the map of the city basically where we've had leaks over the years, not only the location, but the severity. So as you can see, it's all over the city. There's really nowhere in the city that's not affected by this, but we looked at kind of a couple of the hotspots. So based on our master plan, we did, you know, we did identify that upper northeast quadrant as the first phase, obviously, based on age of pipe, based on the need to upgrade the size of the pipes and the location of leaks. The leak studies show that in that area, we have a high concentration of some of the higher, larger leaks, and then we have kind of a higher concentration down here on the southwest quadrant as well. Our decision to target the northeast corner was a combination, both of these studies, as well as the studies undertaken as part of the master plan. And geographically, we were able to kind of isolate a quadrant of the city, actually a nice square that we can target, and basically go in there, do this first phase of work, affect a significant amount of residents, and then move on to the next phase. So it's a very kind of clear-cut project that can stand on its own, and that's the primary reason why we chose that first area there. So what we're proposing as part of this first project, and let me see how I want to do this. Let me grab the board. So you'll have this in front of you, but... So basically, the first phase will consist of a new eight-inch water main, essentially bisecting this project area. So it'll be a new eight that actually does not even exist right now, which will provide amazing pressure to this area that it really doesn't have right now. This area is really underserved. And we will also replace a portion of eight-inch water main. Thank you, sir. On Ninth Street, where there was an extension done in the past, and we'll run it from there. And then we'll replace all the sewer laterals... I mean, I'm sorry, all the water laterals that are behind the homes that actually serve the homes. That's where we've been experiencing a lot of the leaks because they're small pipes, they're galvanized, and they're rusted, and they just need to be replaced. So that's kind of where we are there. Now, this improvement will affect about 230 homes, so it is... It will affect a significant percentage of the city, and that's, you know, all these things combined is why we feel that this should be the first area to target. Also in your packet are some preliminary cost estimates as to what these will cost, these phases. It's Exhibit Three. So we looked at doing everything within this quadrant, including a new eight-inch water main along Sylvania, and we also looked at an option where Sylvania was not included because Sylvania is actually existing is a six-inch line. The installation of this new eight-inch would actually alleviate a lot of the use of it, so in essence, it's not totally necessary to get the impact that we need, but ultimately it is. You know, at the end of the day, we do want to replace all these antiquated lines that are undersized. So again, we have two options just from the... Oh, and the... Yes, and the lead joints. So again, we have two cost estimates here, one including Sylvania, one not including Sylvania. But our suggestion at this point is to pursue the entire project in its entirety, although based on our estimates, at this point, we have some shortfalls in terms of funding, which Madam Manager can address after I'm done. But our approach would be to essentially design it, put this whole area out to bid, and, you know, hopefully with the way the market is right now and with prices we're seeing on water and sewer project, there is a lot of water and sewer work. There are a lot of contractors down here looking for work, so we feel that we can probably, if we put it out to a competitive bid, we may be able to get the project within our price point. So our suggestion at this point is to move forward with the entire Phase One area, including Sylvania, put it out to bid, and see where our bids come in, and at that point, we can make a decision whether or not we can do the whole project or have to pull some stuff out. And it's easy to do in bidding. You can set up the actual bids with alternates that they give you a price on, and you can either reduce them or keep them in the project depending on how the bids come in. And I think that's about it. One other little item of note that just catches my attention, and I think it's good to point out, if you look at that map, the only area of the city where we have an entirely new water main is 62nd Avenue between Eighth Street and... Where did it go to? 16th?
12th.
12th? And if you notice, that's the one area of the city that doesn't have any leaks. So, you know, it's proof evident that we replaced these lines. I think, you know, we're going to definitely see major impacts on our leaks, so... That's it. Any questions?
When will you start?
Well, I...
Tomorrow.
I like your question, but I do have a question. Frankie?
Yes.
In your presentation, you said something about DERM mandates.
Yes.
Only a 10% loss, and we are presently at a 45% loss.
That's correct.
So once DERM realizes this, because I think you said they haven't really... You kind of made our report as soft as possible to them.
Yes.
But once they really realize this huge deficiency or difference in numbers, what are the repercussions? What can we expect from DERM?
I don't know the answer to that.
And they shut off our water? I mean, what... Where...
It's kind of a little bit of uncharted territory. It's a new process for them. We really... They really haven't cracked down in the past. We've done these reports every few years. Now they're requiring these reports every year. So, you know, they have not communicated back to us, so I could really not tell you with certainty what the repercussions will be.
Okay.
Because the bottom line is what needs to be done requires funding that, you know, we don't have the funding to replace the entire system. So I think if they see that we have a plan, and this being a part of that plan, that we're going to roll out and we're doing... We're taking steps towards a full repair.
Okay.
You know, that they would... That would be okay.
Okay.
But I don't know.
Okay.
You know, I could just make a guess.
I understand. I tend to probably have to agree with you on that.
Yeah.
At least they'll see that...
I think if they see that we're taking actions.
We are. I mean, it's not that I wish we would have got this somebody sooner, but it's kind of like good timing.
Yeah, absolutely.
They're really looking at this now, and now is when we have the money to start with the improvement, so...
Yes.
Good. Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may, in addition to the estimated loss of water that we have that's going into the ground that's unaccounted for, we are being billed by Wassa for the loss of water because they are selling us this water. Where it's going, obviously, we know it's going to the ground. So we're losing... I can tell you that the bills, and Mr. Penna can attest to this, the bills, the water bills from Miami-Dade Water and Sewer are pretty much doubling their normal consumption. So they are... The amount of $200,000, it started off with maybe $50,000, $60,000 loss, and it's been increasing as the years go by. We may be losing more than what you reported.
And that... Yeah, and it's difficult... Yeah, and it's difficult to really estimate that exact number. The range I'm giving you is a range of 100 million gallons, so it's, it's a huge range. And the bottom line is there's really no way for us to very
Quantify it.
quantify what we're losing. We can only look at kind of the ranges and see where we're at. We know for sure it's between 50 and 150 million, that it's a, but it's a big range. And if it's on the higher end, you know, there's $200,000 that's going in the ground.
Right, and we're not getting any credits. We're not getting any relief from Miami-Dade County.
Yeah, the city buys, buys water from the county, and that's it. They don't, what we do with it, it's our problem.
And basically, what they're doing is, their yearly study is they're allocating a certain number of gallons based on the past utilization, which is basically what they sell us. So the more water we lose, the more water they allocate to the city on a yearly basis, based on our consumption rate. And every year, we are upping that, that loss in terms of cash that we're paying to Miami-Dade County, plus what we're putting on the ground. In addition to that, over the last three years, I want to say, three years, Mr. Penna, please correct me or stop me if I'm going in the wrong direction, the city has spent, I want to say, over $300,000 in, in, in equipment, repair costs, overtime, in correcting these leaks because once you identify that you have a problem, street paving, you have to take care of the situation. You know that recently, I believe early this summer, we had a huge amount of water loss close to 67th Avenue. Many of you visited the site where our workers were out there, and, you know, this is happening in our system pretty much citywide, and it's a very serious situation.
So needless to say, the sooner we get this started
Yes.
the quicker we'll be, we'll be lessening our losses.
Yes.
I have a question, Frankie, or to whomever, Madam Manager, Mr. Penna. I see your project totals for both of these, your both scenarios, and they're both over the 985 that we're getting
Right.
according to our ceremonial check that's there. So where is the rest of the money coming from?
The rest of the money would have to come from, and again, depending on what direction you want to take with the project, whether you want to include Sylvania.
Either way, either way, it's more than we're getting.
Exactly.
So how are we making up the difference?
So the difference would come from PTP money, utilizing the reserves from PTP money. Although, the PTP money also had another intended use, and that was with drainage projects, which is also something that needs to be contemplated. What goes first? What, where is our priority? Is it in the water, in the completion of Phase One of the water system? Or is it going to be divided into water and drainage improvements, spot drainage improvements throughout the city?
Well, drainage, we're not losing money into the ground. Water, we're losing money into the ground.
Correct.
So we need to put our money where we can
Right.
quickly lessen our losses.
But because the commission members have identified areas where constituents have actually contacted them because there is standing water, we've gone out to bid, and now we have some bids that we, that are under review and soon to come to you for some kind of action, we need to make a determination. Are we going to utilize all of our available resources to include possibility, money coming in from reserves, from general fund, to help offset or subsidize the lack of other funding to complete this first phase of the project? And again, this is an estimate that you have from your engineers. Hopefully, we'll go out to bid, and the bids will come back, and maybe they're within the million-dollar range, and everything can be done with that. But we have to always plan for the worst-case scenario. So if those bids come back, and the engineer's estimate is correct, if we go with the Sylvania Boulevard addition to the project, it's a $1.5 million proposition. For all practical purposes, you have a little bit under a million dollars, so we have a shortfall of about $525,000 for this project. You have $300,000 in reserves from PTP money that can be used for the restoration work and for road resurfacing from the 80% allocation, and the rest of it would have to come from reserves.
So you say we have about $300,000 in PTP?
Yes.
So then you're looking at 225 in reserves?
225.
If we're going with the aggressive, with the inclusion of Sylvania, more or less?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. And that is assuming that the bids come back matching the engineer's estimate.
Does anyone else, any other questions? I'm the one asking all the questions. Any questions from the table for Frankie, or Mr. Penna, or City Manager?
Yes, let me tell you, Mayor, I've been asking questions for the five, several days' years, so now is no questions. What I have now is action. Thank you.
Agreed, agreed, sir, agreed. Anyone else? Well, I've said from day one, well, when I knew, you know, I thought we were going to give this money, we obviously, as the Senator said, we hoped it didn't get vetoed, and it didn't. I knew then that, you know, we were going to go back to Tallahassee next legislative session and continue asking for money. We're not, we're not done by any means. We have to go back because we want to continue, we want to finish the entire city. So the only way I'll go back to Tallahassee and ask for more money is if I see this money already in the ground as far as repairs are concerned. So I couldn't, I couldn't go back to Tallahassee and say, "Give me more money," and I can't even show you what I've done so far. So I'm, I mean, it's, if you're asking me, I say, "Let's get started, go with, obviously, go with the aggressive, find out how much." And then, as you said, we can start taking out
Absolutely.
if we can't afford, but ask for it. Ask for the entire Phase One, and then we'll take it from there. And then I'd like to get this money into the ground as quickly as possible after that. So what do you need from, yes, Commissioner?
The manager made a statement about what we need to, how we're going to prioritize spending the money, and I think that we need to spend the money in this.
Correct.
The other can wait.
Agreed.
You know, we've had that situation for many, many, many years, but we need to fix this. We've been saying we're going to do this, and we keep putting it off, so this needs to be a priority.
I agree, sir. Like I said
That's where the money should go.
The sooner we can, we can start cutting our losses, the better. And I wholeheartedly agree with you. Anyone else? No? Madam Manager, what do you need from us?
We need, I would need
All in favor?
A formal directive by vote of consensus of the commission, if that is acceptable with our city attorney. Number one, identifying the priority being the water system, as you all appear to be favoring at this point. And number two is directing the city engineer to start, well, authorizing this office to proceed in authorizing our city engineers to engage them in the next phase of the work, which would be the design process, correct, Mr. Alonso? Design and bidding and permitting, correct? Okay, so you would have to direct our office to go ahead and enter into an agreement with TY Lin, and you would also have to direct us to set aside the dollars coming from PTP and from reserves, allocate the money, the monies that are going to be devoted to the project, assuming we have a five-point, $1.5 million project on our hands. And again, this has to wait for the bids, but this allows us to fast-track, if you would, the project so that by the time we get back to Tallahassee, and we've talked about this, Madam Mayor, that your boots are on the ground pretty much, the equipment is on the ground, and the work is happening. So this has got to be pronto, as we say.
Before I seek consensus on that, Mr. Penna, do you have anything to add? Frank, anything else?
That's all.
I do have something else. There, with this project comes a replacement of the water meters. You know that for years now, we've been trying to switch out the old meters that are not being serviced by Itron any longer, and we're trying to go into precision meters. We've changed out, I want to say, 400, 500 meters in the city. However, it's going to take a lot of money to change the rest. And so Juan Penna and I agree that we should focus on purchasing the 230 meters plus 20 more surplus meters that are identified by this phase of the project, and we are putting money in your proposed budget, in your tentative budget, to finance the cost of the meters over a five-year period of time because we have to budget the cost of the meters, and we also have to budget the manpower that goes with installing these meters once the improvements are made to the system in that area. So, you know, there is, and the state has been asking pretty much, and I think you were a witness to this, and most of you who were in Tallahassee witnessed this, that the state was asking the city how much we are pledging towards the project. Well, we would be pledging the meters, the manpower to install the meters, and obviously the balance between the 985,000 and the $1.5 million. So we're coming up with a sizable amount of money, probably to the tune of $500,000, without impacting city residents at this point for Phase One.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Madam Manager, do you have your recommendation? Waiting for that. Are you making the recommendation for this?
Yes, it would be our recommendation to proceed this way.
A, B. We are in B now? You make a recommendation?
We need to read the items.
That is my recommendation.
Do you need our?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to call for the clerk to read now, and then we, and we will proceed. Yes.
Item 4B, recommendation and request for resolution by the Office of the City Manager in reference to design permitting, construction engineering, and inspection services, construction management for Phase One A of the potable water main improvements project as submitted by TY Lin International City Engineers by City Manager.
Well, I agree with that. I agree with the recommendation. I make a motion, if you need a motion.
Should I read the resolution, Madam Mayor? Please, Madam Clerk, read the resolution.
Item 11, I mean, item 4C, resolution of Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, accepting the proposal by TY Lin International for professional design and construction, engineering, and inspection, engineering services, including the preparation of construction documents for the City of West Miami, 2019 Potable Water Main Improvement Project Phase One A, authorizing the City Manager to execute the engineering proposal as described herein at Exhibit A for a lump sum in the amount of $198,980 to be funded from the 2019 legislative appropriation approved by the Office of the Governor effective July 1, 2019, providing for effective date.
Motion.
Second.
Call the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, have your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz-Patron.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Next item.
Item five, good of the order.
Thank you.
I do have something for the good, for the good of the order, Madam Manager and my colleagues. I would very much like to see that we also schedule or give the staff recommendations to go ahead. I'd like to see a workshop or some sort of meeting with the residents in that area so that they know what's going on. So I'm not sure if we want to schedule a workshop or how, how we should proceed, but I do want to engage the 230 homes that will be in Phase One so they know where we are and where we're going. Are we in agreement that a workshop is acceptable and applicable to this? Yes? Vice Mayor? We okay with a workshop for, to advise the residents?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner? Okay, so can we this time set a date? Or just give you the marching orders to set a date? How do you want to work this?
Well, we'd have to work with your calendars. Obviously, I think the ideal thing to do is that the entire commission be present.
Correct.
The engineers and Mr. Penna as well, so that we can put our team together and announce some kind of either workshop or town hall meeting.
Perfect.
Whatever you decide to inform the residents and obviously explain to them the game plan here.
Mr. Alonso, how much liberty do you need for this? Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Because sometimes the workshop is, sometimes it's complicated for neighbors. I think we should send an explanatory letter, it would be easier. Everybody would receive an explanatory letter in their homes. If they cannot come to the workshop, they will know what is going to happen. That's a good idea for me.
Good suggestion.
So the letter and the workshop?
What does the rest, what does the rest of the table think? Vice Mayor, I'm saying workshop or town hall, Commissioners adding, I mean, Vice Mayor's adding?
My idea is an explanatory letter to each of the residents. So if one of the residents cannot come to the workshop, they will receive the explanatory letter, and everybody will know what happened.
Right.
Because you use, you call for a workshop, and somebody would not show up, then the people say, "Oh, I didn't know about it, I didn't know." But if you send an explanatory letter to every house, to everybody, everybody will know. It's my idea.
Okay, and what does the rest of the table think? Which part? Both? One or the other? Both?
Well, I don't think he, I don't, I think he's saying in addition to the workshop, right?
Yeah, both.
In addition to?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, are you saying in addition to?
Both.
Both?
Exploratory letter.
Both it is. Frankie, how long, Mr. Alonso, how long do you need?
Whenever you guys are ready, we'll be ready.
Madam Manager, any recommendations as to the timeline for this?
That will not preclude your office from proceeding with the work that has been approved, if I may ask, Madam Mayor from our city engineer.
Understood.
So you, you continue to work, and then in addition to that, we'll prepare for that meeting. So one has nothing to do with the other, and that being said, we have, we have budget meetings in the month of September, but I would encourage you to have it as early as the second week, which is a non-commission week of September, Wednesday, September 14th.
That would be, that would be September 11th.
I'm sorry, I'm, that's right, I'm in the wrong month, I apologize. Well, Wednesday, September 11th is a possibility. We could hold it on, we can also have it, I want to say, the 10th or the 11th of September, or 9th, 10th, or 11th, which is a non-commission week.
I'm, I'm fine with any of those dates. Any input?
A Wednesday preferable for everybody, midweek?
Commissioners?
Is that preferable for you all?
Any preference to the day?
I would, if it could be done on the 9th or the 11th, that'd be preferable.
The 9th?
Or the 11th.
Or the 11th, okay.
The 9th or the 11th?
Let's go with the 11th. Is that okay with everyone? Yes?
September 11th. At what time did you want this workshop? Did you have any recommendations? 6:30, 7 o'clock?
What time do we do our traffic study workshop? Because that worked well, 6:30?
6:30.
Does 6:30 work for everyone? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So 6:30 on September 11th, we'll have our workshop slash town hall
Here in the commission's chambers of the community.
on Phase One, or the, how we're starting our potable water project.
Did you want to have that here in chambers or at the community center? The reason is, we like to videotape it so we could have a record of the proceedings in case anyone asks any questions, or would like to view it. I don't believe that we can accommodate the number of people here or at the multipurpose facility, which can accommodate more residents, and I think we'd have better space to work with, there's enough chairs for everybody.
Multipurpose or the community center, what you're saying?
It's up to you. Either or.
You're pointing where?
Multipurpose.
Multipurpose? So where we at, like? Okay, so at the multipurpose on September 11th at 6:30. We can, you say you want to record that? We can record, okay, so, so there you have it. September 11th, 6:30, at the multipurpose facility. Mr. Alonso, does that work with you, for you?
Not a problem, that works, yes.
So we're going to label this a workshop town hall meeting, correct?
That's fine.
All right, September 11th, 6:30 PM at the multipurpose facility.
And then you will, you will prepare and present to us whatever we're going to send out to the homes?
Yes, I'm going to prepare a draft letter for you all. I am going to need our engineers to help us define or fine-tune the language as we try to best describe in summary the project at hand and the phase, and what I would like to recommend is somewhere we include a map, a sketch of the to recommend is somewhere we include a map, a sketch of the map involved in the Phase One of the project, so that people can literally, you know, see their, if their area, you know, where their area falls into the equation.
Okay.
Yeah, I can prepare a more simplified map that kind of just shows the exact limits of the project.
Now, we're sending one letter, the informational letter with the notification of this meeting.
The informational letter should provide the notification for the meeting, and it should be obviously in English, and then if anybody needs a translation, they can call City Hall, because what we would do is, on the flip side of the letter, we would do a two-sided letter, then we could put the map and a brief explanation on the design concept of the improvements.
Okay.
So that there's a visual from the moment they get the letter.
And we'll get that letter out as soon as possible so we give the residents ample notice.
Yes.
Of the workshop slash town hall. Okay, very good. Anything else on this?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, with that said, I will adjourn this meeting, and we will follow up with our regular commission meeting in a few.